Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Sherbrooke School Committee meeting of June 13, 2017. My name is Bill McAldaugh. I'm the interim superintendent. I'm presiding at this point of the meeting because this is typically in June, the Sherbrooke School Committee conducts its traditional reorganization meeting. So I'll preside over the meeting until the chair, the chair is elected, and then I will pass the meeting back over to the chair. Before we get to that, though, we do have a new member of the committee for 2017, 2018 school year. We'd like to welcome Angie Johnson.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
So traditionally, the practice is, as I indicated, the superintendent presides over the traditional reorganization meeting. Once the chair's elected, the chair will take over the meeting from there. What will happen is I'll call for nominations from committee members for the position of chairman, and once we have a nomination or more, I'll ask for seconds, and then we'll take a vote. So without further ado, is there a nomination for the position of chairman?
I nominate Greg Garland.
Ms. Parker nominates Mr. Garland. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, do we have a second for the nomination of Mr. Garland?
Second.
Ms. Deben seconds the nomination of Mr. Garland as chair. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Abstaining? Is that an aye?
I am abstaining.
You're abstaining. So the motion carries. Four in favor, zero opposed, and one abstaining. Congratulations, Mr. Garland.
Thank you.
I will hand the meeting back over to you.
Okay, so I guess we do secretary now?
We do.
So open the floor for nominations for secretary. Can I nominate? I can nominate.
You certainly can.
I'll nominate Kate for secretary. Any other nominations?
Kate, find the nomination. I can't. I'm looking through, Angie.
Don't try to talk her out. So how did you do this? Did we close the nominations? Ask for a second?
Second.
Well, if I may make a point of procedure, nominations are just simply nominations. Anyone can nominate. There's no second required for nomination. You just simply close nominations, and then it's a ballot or a show of hands. So it's not an in-favor, out-of-favor.
So apparently you read.
Someone's reading here.
But there may be customary practice, so we're not approving or disapproving nominations.
Given your knowledge, perhaps you should be chairman.
I'll just keep us running smoothly.
There you go.
Thank you. So since we don't have to have a second, but thank you anyway, we'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? None opposed, abstaining?
Aye.
Okay. So congratulations.
There you go.
Is that it? For offices for reorganization?
No. Do I need to change chairs? Kate, does she need to sit as the chair?
No, I don't think so. So we, Bill, we're going to do committee assignments later. We're going to talk about that, or are we going to do it? We're going to let people think about what they want. Do we have a list of?
Yes, so Cheryl will be sending out a list of committee assignments on behalf of Greg. And I think what you'd like to hear from committee members is what interests they may have in certain subcommittees.
Right.
And then you will make assignments, share those with Cheryl, and then send them back to you, and the assignment list will be distributed.
Yeah, so a lot of times we do it just in one night, and I want people to have time to think about what they want, and it's not going to be limited to, sometimes we just have one person, but you essentially can do whatever you want to do unless it's cumbersome for the committee. And one change I think we're going to make is typically all of us are considered to be part of the budget committee, and I think we're going to change that to be the chair and the secretary so we can have more meetings, talk about the budget than having to do everything out in the.
So maybe a subcommittee, I guess?
Yeah, so it's going to be a budget subcommittee. So that'll be one change that we'll probably see.
And I think, Greg, the plan was to send the list out with what current members have been assigned to.
Right.
And so you'll have an opportunity to say, gee, I'd like to try something different, or keep that assignment.
Right. All right. Public comment. We have more public than we normally have. So there'll be opportunities later if there's a specific item on the agenda to speak to. Any public comment right now? Nope. So we'll move on to the grade five health sex education program discussion. Bill?
I'd like to introduce this, but before I do, I'd like to acknowledge and welcome Superintendent-elect, the incoming superintendent, Andrew Keough, who is here with us tonight. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Great to be here.
This agenda item, the grade five health education program discussion, was, there was a request for this item to be put on the agenda so that there could be an opportunity for some discussion, a brief summary of the information you received, first, a brief summary of the information you received in your packet from Barbara and Jackie, and then an opportunity for Q and A. There have been some questions that have been raised about some changes that occurred in this year's program, and so this is the opportunity to have a discussion and some Q and A relative to the questions that have been raised. Barbara and Jackie?
Do you want to launch? Do you want me to launch?
I can, I'm happy to.
That would be great.
So I just wanted to make a very quick correction, if you will. There is no sex education at elementary up to fifth grade. That's middle school. It starts to get called that. It's just part of our health curriculum, and it's, the unit is on puberty, and it's a by-grade-five understanding hormonal, emotional, and physical changes. So just to be clear that we're not talking about, you know, sex education, but it's puberty, just to be.
As elementary educators, we really appreciate that distinction.
So I know that what we sent along was a pretty detailed explanation of how we landed where we did with some modifications to the curriculum that was in place. I know that, I've only been here since September, conversations around this began, my understanding is maybe a couple of years ago, and the conversation started because the two educators that were really involved with this, the school nurse and Mr. Carnes, the P.E. teacher, had decided that what they were doing was, it needed to change. The way it had changed in the past was, let's switch up the video, you know, okay, let's switch up the date, we'll do it on that last Friday for like 30 minutes before we send kids on their way. They felt like they weren't doing the health standard justice. They felt like we needed to rethink it and reorganize it, and perhaps take the focus away from, you know, let's just talk about the physical changes around, you know, specifically to the gender, and let's start to talk about social, emotional, physiological, hormonal changes that are going to impact everybody, and so that we can really understand and appreciate each other and respect each other a little more. So those conversations, I wasn't privy to how those began, but when I came into the conversation, I'm thinking around November-ish, we were making a plan to really do some outreach and find out what other districts were doing. We were made aware of some districts that classroom teachers just teach it as part of their curriculum. So it's just, you know, today's lesson is, and it's the classroom teacher, and it's just part of the day. It typically lands somewhere in June of fifth grade. That's just, it's sort of that last piece of the year. They're ready for it at that point. Some districts do kind of the, what we were terming, kind of that old-school, okay, you know, the male teacher and the female teacher are coming into the room, you know, here they come, separate, go watch a video of some kind. Typically, those videos were sort of old, really old in the way they were presented. And then, you know, maybe they came back together as a group and had a quick Q and A, which sometimes was silent some years. Some years, there was more discussion, and then it was kind of like, can go and have a nice summer. And that's sort of where it landed. And they felt like the two teachers were really, wanted to offer a little bit more than that, and wanted to offer some respectful conversation and opportunities for students to go to them for any feedback, share any concerns, and just make it more of a natural conversation, even though we know the conversation is a difficult one, not just for students, but for adults as well. It's a hard conversation to be having, so.
If I may interject, over the last couple of years, as we've been growing our health curriculum and really trying to do a better job of aligning to standards, we realized that in the context of human growth and development, AKA puberty, we were reaching a little bit into some content that was not necessarily intended for fifth grade, puberty and a little bit beyond. So our intent was to scale back to the fifth grade standards, staying, as Jackie eloquently stated, what happens, what shifts. We felt a little bit hypocritical in that we teach everything in a larger context, and with this particular unit, it was more of a lesson on the end of the day, right before buses rolled, and we weren't proud of making that a more comprehensive kind of discourse and learning opportunity for kids. Jackie coming in at the tail end of this work did a great job leading the content shift. I fully recognize that communication ought have been tighter and clearer with parents about the distinction we were making to no longer separate students by identified gender. And it was implied, it was part of our conversation, but as I go back and was brought to my attention, I should have been clearer in putting that out. So I want to own that. It felt like a natural implied shift, and we're trying to be respectful of families and students, and make things happen in a more, a more natural learning community for students. So I apologize. I know that that was, that's on me. I should have been clearer with that communication.
With that, I just wanted to, you know, publicly put out there that all the way along in planning this, it was at the forefront of our minds in terms of knowing, you know, this isn't like a shift or modification in math curriculum or reading, and we know that there's always, per policy from the school committee and beyond, that there's an opt-out portion of this, regardless of how it's presented. Health curriculum, not just at elementary, but you can opt your student out, or the student can opt out. So that was always in the back of our minds. We always had a plan from day one as to how we were going to give an opportunity to parents to come and learn more about the, I call them changes, but they really, it really is just a shift in the presentation, because the content itself didn't change. It grew, it stretched out, and we feel like we did, we did a really nice job with it ultimately. And I have to say that when I presented originally Parent Information Evening to both Jim and Jill, they had historically tried to do those, and that outreach had been there, but, you know, maybe one or two people had showed up, and, you know, there was some reluctance, like, well, you know, if only one or two people come. And I said, you know what, if one or two people come, that's great, but we need to put out to the parents what students are going to be hearing and seeing. So in developing the lessons, which Jill and Jim can take the credit for that, I just kind of was alongside them and, you know, giving them some feedback on how that was going. We were gathering data from another district who had developed a fifth grade curriculum for this that was much more extensive than what we wanted to do, but gave us some great pointers, as a district that does present in a classroom setting as sort of a health class. And they gave some really nice ideas to us as to how this could be done. We took pieces of it that we really liked and we thought would work well in the community, and trying to really honor the community that we work in as well. And then, you know, we felt in fairness, we would offer the opportunity to see essentially that slideshow that was put together, that would really offer, you know, come talk to us, come chat, come ask questions, come learn more. So in doing that, Jim was kind enough to step in, and he did that with me. We had 20 parents show up that evening, and we had a really great evening with them. We showed them the short video that the students were going to see, which was 15 minutes. The focus of the video truly was just, it was on like hormonal changes and how that might impact relationships and friendships. And knowing the work that I in particular have been doing with fifth grade students, there's a lot of that kind of emotional baggage right now, like, I'm not really sure, you know, how this is working with a friend, I want to understand this. So we felt like that fit really well with where our students were. Parents saw that. We offered a Q and A, and at the end, we had all positive feedback on that night. And I received three or four very positive emails and emails of thanks. And then I know that on the heels of that, you know, in sharing the slideshow further, timeline was close to the presentation to the students. I know that people felt like they did not have that opportunity to really digest the information about the fact that, you know, we were not doing the gender divide. It was going to be in the classroom setting, and, you know, again, sharing the slideshow with parents so they could see what had been viewed at the information night. And then, you know, we had already planned that once the lesson started, we would kind of give a, this is how it's going, students are receiving it well, which they did. On the flip side of this, Jill and Jim did a really nice piece of work with the students in terms of, they just had them fill out a sheet, which they had never done, with like a, so how did this go? And what are your thoughts? And what are your worries and concerns? And if you want to reach out to us as, you know, a small group of girls that may have concerns, you're welcome to come and chat with, you know, anybody who's available at a teacher. Certainly Jill and Jim made themselves available as well. So that's kind of shapes it.
Mr. Garland, if I can interject and perhaps help us maybe narrow the focus a little bit so we can get along with some Q and A. It appears to me that, and I'm not sure, and I'm not sure, I know myself, A, the level of concern raised, and in particular, what those concerns were. It seems to me, from going through all the packet of material, having a conversation with Barbara and Jackie about the process, that maybe there were concerns about the content, maybe there were concerns about the practice of presenting this program to a mixed group of students, where in the past, it's always been to students, either male or female, and perhaps the timing of the notification and how the new information and new practice was shared with parents. So it seems to me that maybe those are the three big pieces. When you look at content, it doesn't appear to me that there are major shifts or changes in content. I think there was a really very fine effort to really try to just refine that, and so that it was, it was an opportunity to be more clear with our fifth graders, and in the end, I really do trust our professional staff around content. So if that's a concern that was raised, then hopefully somebody will verify that. But it seems to me that perhaps the biggest concern was related to the change in practice of teaching this to a mixed group as opposed to separate groups. And if that, in fact, is the major concern, then there may be questions being asked about, you know, that's a pretty major shift, so perhaps there should have been, in this planning process, more time allotted to when this information was shared with parents, so that parents might have had much more of an opportunity to ask questions and to be part of that dialogue. So if that's the case, clearly, I think a lesson is learned here that, in my opinion, and I've shared this with Barbara and Jackie, if that is the major concern, you know, I agree that that's a pretty major shift in practice. It certainly would have been helpful to have more time, and, you know, that just didn't happen here, and we apologize for that. But certainly, I think we've, we understand that going forward, that's something we always need to consider when we're making changes in practice. So I don't know if that's helpful to kind of narrow this, the focus here.
So, yeah, I think if people have questions, or maybe just comments, I've got a couple, but I don't want to spend a ton of time on it. But does anybody have any specific questions or thoughts?
I have a question. I realize this is a curriculum issue, but, you know, as you said, it's such a sensitive topic, and it is a big change in the delivery from previous years. Is this something that parents would typically be consulted on in the creating of the curriculum, not just at the opt-out point, but in the, what do you think of this change? No?
I would say no. Personally, on experience I've had with developing curriculum, I don't think typically parents are invited as part of that, as a general practice, like in developing the curriculum. But feel free to correct me if I'm wrong.
Developing the curriculum is the responsibility of the professional staff, but again, you know, given curriculum, but given the sensitive nature of this topic, I think that if there are changes in those sensitive areas of the curriculum, then, you know, we should try to be, we should try to be proactive in communicating changes that are different from past practice so that parents can be aware of them and at least have the opportunity to ask questions, certainly make comments. It doesn't mean that, you know, whether it's developing curriculum, or developing policy, or developing protocols around administrative procedures, you know, when we provide that information to parents and the public, you know, hopefully, we're listening to feedback, which may in fact change our minds about, you know, certain practices or certain aspects of a, you know, proposed curriculum, or practice, or procedure, or policy. So that certainly is not unreasonable.
And if I may add, Kate, because it's a sensitive topic, and because it's a content area that often children learn about at home, and is reinforced at school or vice versa, but we certainly want home and school to be able to have conversations in ways that, families to be informed so that they can have conversation in ways that they choose to with their children. Historically, we've always invited parents in for a preview of the information, so that parents were queued up and knowing how, having an opportunity to think about how they may approach conversations at home with their children. And the attendance the last few years was minimal, so I think we went to a little bit more of a laissez-faire. So this topic is coming up, would you like to borrow some of the materials to preview them? And some parents did that outside of school in coffee clutches or what have you. So I think, I think because the response to how we have taught it this way for so long, less and less parents were opting to view the materials, that I got relaxed in reaching out to parents in a timely and important manner. So we will take care to market moving forward well in advance of the time of year, so parents can review the material and be prepared to anticipate questions, pre-teach or pre-introduce some of those dinner conversations that are a little more colorful than soccer match discussions.
So I just had a couple of thoughts. In that, so I don't hear from anybody about anything, but I heard about this from parents. So I was interested to read the emails, and it, and really, the idea was never, was never introduced. It just said a slight curriculum, adjusting our curriculum slightly, about the change in the health curriculum. So I could see how parents would go, especially parents of kids that have been through it. It's like, oh, it's, you know, fine, adjust the curriculum, but not no. So how, I guess I'm curious about other communications down the road, what's the lesson learned here? So you both were sort of just assuming that, you know, I guess it wasn't a big deal, or, and I don't fault you for that. So with regard to other topics, how do you, how do you, how do you avoid something like this in the future, just in terms of communicating with parents? Is that a fair question?
It's a fair question, and that's fully on me as the principal, to be clear and more explicit in our communications about anticipating as we, in fifth grade parents in general, we have, tend to have more communications because of all of the.
Changes.
Lots of activities and rites of passage, et cetera. So that's on me to be, to be more pointed, specific, and explicit, and invite earlier on, parents to understand the content so that they make you up, whatever on the home front is important for them to do so.
So fourth grade parents heard about this and said, oh, I'm not sure I like that, and a lot of them came to you and said, we don't like it this way. Would you change it? Would you still do it and just let them opt out, or?
I haven't heard from many fourth grade parents, so hypothetically, I, without going into too much detail, I think it's important for us to be really sensitive around gender identity and to follow the lead of our students around what's most engaged in productive learning, not just parent perception, but both of that dovetails.
So all the communities around us are doing it this way, and that's sort of best practice, then that's something good to know.
I know that chickering are heading in this, because that was obviously a place to have dialogue right away, and in fact, ask them, what is their practice? And their practice has gone back and forth. They've done, you know, all students together, and they've separated, and the rationale for that is simply who the instructor was. So, you know, again, I said, you know, how did you, how did you get that message out? Well, we didn't, we didn't really highlight it, per se. It was more, you know, it's that time of year, this is what we're doing, and we didn't necessarily highlight, because I think they've gone back and forth, but they are, too, moving in this, in this direction in the future. I think it's.
But we certainly would be responsible.
But entertaining it, yeah. And I think we have already, we had built in as part of our plan, if you will, we tried to be as thoughtful as possible, sort of beginning to end, in terms of, just because we delivered those couple of lessons, we haven't closed the book on this. We already have a plan that, and we have already met, to then go over and review, like, how did it go? And not just like, well, how was the lesson? Well, that was great. But really, like, you know, from the Parent Information Evening and the slideshow, and I have to say, as part of the communication, I felt that the slideshow provided kind of a lot of information, but without having conversation around it, the way we did on the evening, I can see, that's where I see the breakdown personally. So anyway, I think, you know, we're poised for, you know, discussion and input, for sure. It's part of the plan moving forward to refine the practice and the curriculum. It's part of the plan moving forward to refine the practice and the curriculum.
And I, I would anticipate next February, March-ish, again, front-loading parents with opportunity and better explaining the context in which the, the learning community that we're intent on having children most comfortable for learning. Some precarious stuff.
Any other comments? Any community comments?
Thank you. I mean, I understand this is very sensitive and there's so many people that have differing opinions. I'm a parent of a fifth grade child and I have two older sons who went through this program and I didn't have a problem with it. I had just my daughter out because she is returning 11th to 20th of July and she didn't feel comfortable being in the same room, learning about some of this subject at her as, you know, boys next to her or whatever. And I also didn't feel comfortable with some of the vocabulary that had been communicated to us. I could not go to the orientation that night because of a family conflict to see the new video, but I had gone to the one where my Now We Read her, there was a new movie rolled out. So that's why, you know, I just feel like she's still so young and there was some, even if she has two older brothers, there was some vocabulary words that, that I just didn't feel comfortable with her being exposed to, next to the, you know, boys, next to her. I just wanted to be sensitive to her.
Sure.
I also have a daughter in the fifth grade and I did opt out as well. And my, the difference is I was at the parent meeting and I saw the movie. And I knew then that I thought it was important for all parents to know what had been shown to the parents at that parent meeting. And I expressed that to Jackie in email. And an email came out after that, but it did not explain that separating genders at all. I mean, that they would not be separated. And then I wrote back and explained the difference, separate genders. And another email came out to the parents that again didn't explain that. And then actually after the program began, a third email came out that again, very vaguely, very, very, very vaguely after the first lesson, only limited to the fact that the genders were combined with the words, boys and girls or genders or never mentioned. It was just students believing that. So that can run a lot of things. So to me, it's a couple of very big red flags and I was alarmed at the, not lack of communication, but it seemed like something should try to be delivered to see.
Thank you. Thank you. Is that it? Thank you guys for the explanation.
I'm a fourth grader, so I.
There you go.
But I've heard from a lot of fourth grade parents and I've heard from a lot of fifth grade parents and I'd say I'd have to agree that a shift like that, like what was, I, I don't understand, is it just a curriculum, this is the way everybody, all the other districts are teaching it? They're teaching it together and therefore we're going to try it that way or we're moving in that direction and this is the direction we're staying in? Because I don't know that I feel comfortable with my son sitting next to girls and having that education.
So to, to move it on, or try, try to anyway, be sensitive to that. If, if, if it's found that that's best practice and that's what, not doing it just because everybody else is doing it, but that's the way it should be taught, then, and you know that upfront, I mean, that's an important fact, right? I think, not just, hey, we're going to do this for whatever reason. But so that's an important fact, people can still opt out, right?
Yeah, Greg, so what I would say is that legitimate concerns have been raised. I think it's fair to say, and I'll take the, ultimately, the superintendent is responsible, so, so this can fall on me. But ultimately, I think there was, there's an issue of timing. There just wasn't enough time to convey the information that we had to, that we should have conveyed. But given the fact that, you know, it's now passed, we're hearing legitimate concerns, I think it's fair to say that, you know, the, the district will take a look at this, consider the feedback. There may be some additional ways to, there may be an additional attempt to collect additional feedback and to go through all that information as they start the planning process for next May. And, and I think that that's, that's fair. We all, we all make mistakes, even, even in the school organization. We're all accountable. I think that, you know, I think that that is what is going on and that's what's happening here. And, you know, our goal ultimately is to, is to deliver the best content, the most appropriate content for our kids at whatever grade level, to do it in a way that we hope is transparent. Unfortunately, sometimes that doesn't happen and we need to learn from that and make those adjustments, which I'm confident will happen. And then, and, and we learn from these kind of experiences and I'm sure that's what is going to happen here.
Thank you for your, for coming and, and your comments. All right. So we'll move on to item six on the agenda, the administration reports.
Thank you, Greg. We'll start with Dr. Brown's report.
Well, good evening, everyone. You have a report of activity and professional development that has happened since our last school committee meeting. Every year in June, I ask myself, hmm, why is it we put so much activity off until the month of June? And then I forget about it until the following June. But it is a very robust, very robust month for lots of culminated, culminating activities to celebrate learning. I wanted to highlight that since we last met, we have held our kindergarten orientation last Friday. Current kindergarteners did not have school and all of our students registered to be in kindergarten next year visited in small groups with the three kindergarten teachers and support staff. And you recall our conversations over the last couple of years, that used to look more like a, welcome to Pine Hill School, now sit down and do all of these tasks on command because we want to screen you for language and motor and cognition kinds of things. And we've, we've slowly shifted that. So we hope, our intent is that children arrive and we say, welcome to Pine Hill School. Isn't it really shiny and warm and welcoming and check it out and do some exploration and go home with, go home with a taste for what's to come in September. So, so that's what happened last Friday, 47 students, as you see. Our fifth graders were at Hill Reservation today and will be again for the next two days. Those are extended day trip, but not overnights. We send them home at the end of the day to get hydrated and cooled off and then, and go back out. You're recalling conversations, we've grown this into what is now a three-day experience with foresting and ponding and orienteering and team building and challenging rope courses, et cetera. What is really exciting this year is that the fifth graders from Chikering School have co-mingled with our Pine Hill fifth graders and this will truly be a celebration of elementary and an opportunity to begin some team building as our students matriculate into middle school. We're really excited about that. The superintendent in his report will talk about specific personnel, but I wanted to mention that we are in the throes of vetting candidates for our vacant positions and have the benefit of super robust candidate pools. For a special ed teaching position, we vetted 50 applicants and for a classroom teacher position, we have 165 applicants. So I look forward to informing you once we've nominated and hired dynamic new educators.
Thanks, Greg. I just want to make one comment. I want to congratulate Dr. Brown and Ms. Dial, Principal of Chikering, for making the arrangements and, and making the logistics work for both fifth grades to, to be experiencing the Hill Reservation trip. I think it's a tremendous opportunity for our fifth graders to come together. They come together already in a number of other ways through other outside of school activities, but in the educational setting, I think this really is a great way for our fifth graders to end the year and as they start, and start thinking about, you know, what's it going to be like in the fall when, when they go off to sixth grade at the middle school and, you know, they'll, it's just another opportunity for them to make connections. And I, I think it's very positive, so well done.
I look forward to dipsticking our students after they have this experience. Truth be told, about a week ago, what I was hearing was, that's not fair, that's our thing, this is a Pine Hill thing, we don't want it to change. So I look forward to dipsticking the students over the next couple of days.
Dr. Duke?
Thank you. So the educator evaluation is wrapping up for this year. They'll be finishing the summative evaluations for those educators who are on that plan. I wanted to highlight the Qualified Peer Observer, which is part of the educator evaluation system where our educators are paired with another colleague. It's a great program that focuses on the goals that those individual educators have with their Qualified Peer Observer. So a good exchange of ideas, increasing collegiality, improvements in practice, broaden our understanding of what other, what other educators are doing, but also maybe some other in the district. But time's always an issue and a common meeting time together is an issue. In particular, I wanted to highlight some of the things that have been happening in Metco. Monique Marshall-Vill is our Dover Sherburne Metco coordinator and she spans all four buildings. She has focused the year on diversity and inclusion as she has in the past, but this year has been completely multifaceted. Students, families, educators, administrators and community members. And I want to personally thank Kate Potter for your work with, as a Metco liaison, working with Monique on some of the activities that have happened, the, at the educator conference, the attendance at the Anti-Defamation League, the DS Conversation Club, DS Friends and Families. So there's a lot that's happening and will continue. As we focus on social and emotional learning as the three districts, this fits in perfectly in order to assure that all students feel included and that the diversity is respected. So I just wanted to give her a shout out for the work that she has done.
Thank you. Thank you, Kate. Ms. Smith?
I have included a report in the packet regarding CPAC activities. We had a recent, recently held a CPAC meeting where district leaders were invited to come and have a roundtable conversation with CPAC, asking questions about changes of, that are coming in the upcoming year. At that meeting, unfortunately, our elementary representatives were not able to be, weren't available because of, mostly because of MCAS testing. And so CPAC would like to run that again at the local levels to include our, our elementary administrators for the, for the fall. But at that meeting, I did talk about the programs, the expansion of the LBLD program at the high school, the expansion of the life skills program at the high school, our reconfiguration of the board certified behavior analysis position. So that position going from the two locals to the district-wide position. And then, and we did speak about the transition program coming to the high school. And since the writing of this memo, that grant has been awarded and we're pleased to be looking forward to bringing that into the high school.
Thank you. Ms. McCallum?
Thank you, Mr. Golland. Before I just say a few quick words about enrollment and staffing, over the last 10 minutes, as, as people were talking, for the first time in two years at this meeting, I happened to take a look at the TV monitor and I did notice that there's a delay. So I was very pleased to, to come to that understanding. So now I know if, if something inappropriate slips out, then somebody will do something about it, hopefully.
Can you, can you get this in Lexington where you live? So you'll be watching it as we move along?
I don't think so.
It's on the website.
Thankfully.
It's on YouTube.
It's on YouTube. The, you, you have information about enrollment. The enrollment trend has remained consistent over the last six months. It's been less aggressive this year than it certainly was last year. And if we look out where we currently stand at our projections for next year, especially at the one-year rate, because I do believe that's where the projection will be closer to that particular set of numbers. We are still within our class size policy guidelines, so I think we're good there. Hopefully, you know, that trend will continue. So we're not anticipating any issues with that, at least at this point in time. And, and we still have, of course, what happens is, is that from grade to grade, as you know, as you know, and as I've talked about numerous times the last couple of years, the numbers that you currently see in a grade don't necessarily reflect that, for example, all 73 of those students are automatically moving to the next grade because we will have some students who will move out of town, who will leave, and we have other students who will take their place. Sometimes there's more students who come in than migrate out, but, but I think our, as we saw last September, our projections were really, you know, we were within three students of what we projected on the October enrollment. So my expectation is that, that will continue.
I've got a question, if you'll entertain questions on this?
Well, of course I will.
Okay. So it seems like the, the jump from kindergarten to first grade is less than what it used to be, I think, since we have more kindergarten, we have, and preschool went out of business, I think. So the, we've got 47 right now scheduled for kindergarten. Do you have thoughts, I mean, and you've got 52 on the one-year projection. Do you have any thoughts if that's, that's close or would you expect more than that? And the reason I ask is because we're dropping off seven, we got 412, we're dropping off 74 from fifth grade, picking up 47 in kindergarten. So that's a, that's a net loss of 27 kids. So that's a lot. I mean.
No, but remember, we're picking kids up along the way in grades K through five.
I, I understand that, but that, that implies to get back to 412, we've got to pick up 27 kids.
Right. So the last two years' projection suggests certainly that we'll pick, we will pick up another between, between, you know, certainly five, what we're projecting is we'll pick up net an additional five to eight students. And my sense would be that a number of those will be kindergarten students. We did pick up a handful of kindergarten students during the summer last year, the last couple of years.
Well, I'm assuming there's going to be a lot more, but we'd have to pick up 27 from now to get back to the same number. So, and that seems hot, that just seems hot.
Well, well, remember, remember the way that the projections work, it's based on historical numbers between October 1 and September 30. Theoretically, we've already picked up eight of those 27 students.
Right.
Because of the growth during this, this school year.
Right. Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure I was reading that right because we've never picked up that many before, but I, but that's, that's actually good news, I think.
And it will perhaps give us an opportunity to redeploy, for example, our current kindergarten cohort is, is bulbous.
Yes.
But just to be clear, over the last three years, Greg, we, we have in fact picked up more. If you, if you remember, two years ago, we had, I don't know, 16 more students than, than was projected.
Right.
The previous year. And so that growth, the growth over the last three years has been very, very aggressive and, and very different than what the projections were showing three years ago. So. And, and last year, we predict, we projected, I want to say 400 and, I have to go back. It was either 401 or 402 students and we actually enrolled on October 1, 404. And that was picking up by the time, by the time the school year ended, we had, we were at 391, I think, last year. So we picked up those additional students and.
We're going to miss your trap, Mr. McCallum.
But, but again, you know, some of these numbers are just unpredictable.
Oh, yeah. I understand. But I think it's moving in a very favorable direction.
And then the second piece of information, Barbara has alluded to that, but this gives you a snap, snapshot in time of where we stand with personnel changes. We did, through the course of the year, because of new students enrolling, we had to add two additional EAs, one of whom we had, we had budgeted for. And so there was, there were, that position had gone unfilled for approximately. had gone unfilled for approximately, you know, six or seven months. And then we had a new student coming April, and we've been able to fund that through some, through some funding that's been available. For next year, we have, we do have some vacancies, as you can see. We're in the process, as Barbara had indicated, Barbara and her staff are in the process of hiring these staff right now. And then we have, we had the .4 increase in the pre-K program that was presented back in the winter, that's being funded through the pre-K tuitions. So Shawna Jean has been assigned now full-time at pre-K. The school psychologist, an additional .2 FTE was budgeted, so the school psychologist, Lisa Blair, has been assigned an additional .2, and we're looking for the fless teacher now. So we're in good shape, and I think that June will be busy, but most of these hires, if not all, will occur prior to the end of the month.
Thank you. My report. Number seven, the finance report. My favorite part.
What'd you say?
My favorite part.
Your favorite part. So in anticipation of getting closer to June 30, we did our best to sort of give you what the snapshot would look like. And the biggest change that we've done is, all the funds that we know are out there in circuit breaker world, we've gone ahead and we've moved general operating expenses over to the circuit breaker, so you have a cleaner look at what your financials really look like in the general fund. That's the biggest thing. I think we pretty much clearly described in the memo the salaries, the expenditures, and the added district, rather than just going through it. Does anyone have any questions on those pieces, and then I'll sort of just walk through the So salaries have stayed the same, we're projecting 26,000, still projecting 26,000. We did increase the expenditure side a little bit as we were getting closer, and the increase in that predominantly came from our heat. Now that we have most of our heating bills paid, we do have, we increased that projection, knowing that in 18's budget, we did reduce some of that, knowing that we were on this trend of reduced heating costs. The other pieces of the expenditures, we had already discussed. So added district, what I tried to lay out for you are all the pieces that we've been talking about over this last four months, really, when we knew we were in this predicament where we had a large overage on added district expenses. So we've talked about that, you know, we don't fully budget for circuit breaker, so now that's $35,000 that we've moved out of the general fund to the circuit breaker. We had a carryforward balance of $15,999. We've allocated expenses for that. And then, as we mentioned at the meeting last month, we received in May an extraordinary relief circuit breaker payment of $52,897. We've also taken expenses and applied dollar-for-dollar for that amount. That then leaves you with $119,043 of added district expenses that were not budgeted.
So the relief, the extraordinary relief, $52,897?
Mm-hmm.
The 119 is net of that number.
Exactly.
So where do I say that number?
So if you look at the 350, so I have, I've been adding to your statement that italicized line where it says total charge to circuit breaker?
Oh.
That 350,000, it used to be, until I did that for you, 245,000. So we've added about 100,000, 105,000, which is made up of those three numbers I just told you.
I know you're running out of space here, but if we do that, it'd be, it'd kind of be nice to see those line items.
Right, so it's in your report, it's written.
Right, yeah, right.
Right, so see them, right.
Like a picture.
So when we give you the, if you remember, in September, when we show back up and we sort of have a really detailed report, and this is, all that will be laid out for you. Yeah, I am running out of space, I had to shrink it down.
Right, because we're all confused about circuit breaker, I think I can speak for everybody.
Exactly.
It would be nice to see all the numbers in the table, along with all the other numbers.
Exactly. So at least now you're seeing the pieces on this statement, and we've, rather than waiting till over the summer to adjust your operating statement, we've done that now, so you can clearly see, we've spent every dollar of circuit breaker, so that you, we're really left with dealing with the 119,000.
Got it.
Which we then are offsetting by 96,000 projection, 96,000 from your operating funds.
Right.
So if you look at, just to walk you through, the 105, it's the total industrial operating budget remaining, or variance of 105,000.
Right.
We know there's still some expenses we're going to incur that aren't encumbered, but your 96,000 is sitting in that 105,000, right? So we know 96 we're not going to, so that falls down to, you have $13,578 that, right now, we don't have any money in the budget to cover. So now we'll be going to the supplemental appropriation that the town voted for you in...
May.
May, April.
It's a short word, April.
April. Actually, that 13,000 will grow by the 10,000 I haven't spent, so 23,000. So of the 70,000 they gave you, right now, we need to use 23 of that. The rest of it will go back to the town.
Right.
But the other point that is made in here is, before we were fortunate enough to get the extraordinary relief, we had applied 100% of the non-resident student tuition fund of about 38,000. We've taken sort of the recommendation that we should leave that fund intact and not use that this year, and it gives you another, it gives you more flexibility for next year.
We're not compelled to spend it on anything in particular, right?
No.
No, it's a revolving fund that you set up, but for the purpose of special ed tuition costs.
And that'll be one of those funds that we won't have that revenue every year, I believe. So that might be a nice, I guess, the committee some flexibility for next year, that we don't have to be spending for the elementary because we're having added district overages.
Okay.
Any questions on that, then?
If you could just put that to us next year, yes.
What, of what?
Is it all being, is it being here next year for what it's meant?
Yes, in circuit break, right.
So will all of this be talked about?
Yes, will be built into what we're giving to the state for circuit breaker calculation this year.
The calculation that we're giving, is that everything?
No. No, that's current year, circuit breaker.
Oh, so that's...
That's not what the expenses that we will report to them, and then see what circuit breaker is going to be computed for next year. We do that over the summer, we'll tell you in the fall what your circuit breaker is going to be. I mean, we projected it, but we'll know for sure.
And we won't be eligible for extraordinary relief. And we won't be eligible for extraordinary relief next year.
We're not taking our stability.
That additional $52,000, $53,000 will not be, no. But the, but the total amount that we're reimbursed in and identified within September will go up.
Yes.
See?
Because of, right. Exactly.
That's right.
Right. And that's something for, 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 I don't know, the town is going to have.
That's right, yes, we have some other reason for extraordinary relief.
Okay. That's a clear, that's a good, that's a good point. I hate to drag this out, but the question was, we have our stability fund.
Stabilization fund.
It's your last meeting, Bill, we got to, we got to finish that one. We have the stability fund, and I can't remember, Scott was asking, we're, we tap that for next year, and it's going to be replenished with free cash.
Right, so you tapped it, but they replenished it, so there's 100,000 in there.
Using it, but replenishing, if that makes sense.
It was just an accounting in and out of cash flow purposes, yeah.
But we were safe by free cash.
You still have, exactly.
Okay.
Right. The important thing to remember is there is $100,000 in the town's Special Education Stabilization Fund.
Got it.
Right?
Yeah.
But we won't forget next year.
Oh, yeah.
If you use it, might not get replenished.
Right, 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 right.
Maybe something will happen, and you will.
The capital, update on capital?
Right, so we put together a, just a synopsis of where we stand on the capital projects for 18, and just to let you know that 17 was completely wrapped up at this point. Does anyone have any, and we also highlighted the fact that we did have a kickoff meeting for the onsite insight evaluation that'll be taking place the week of July 17.
So I've got a quick question. So the clock, and we've been talking about the clock system for a long time, and it's 8,000.
No pun intended.
What?
No pun intended, but I'm...
Oh. Thank you, Barbara. Where'd that money come from? Because it's not...
Operating budget.
Huh?
From the operating budget.
So...
It's already shown in results. So I, as I mentioned, we had, back when we were having all this added district, we put a freeze on most of the budgets here. So there was money in the equipment and supplies that weren't spent during this year.
Equipment and supplies?
Yes. You don't see that, because it all rolls into custodial services. So if you look at, and there's two lines you have to look at, if you look at custodial services, you see right now there's $42,481 remaining in that, but you have to offset that with extraordinary maintenance. I'm going to clean that accounting up a little bit, but if you take the 42,000, which is left, and minus the 22,000 in red for extraordinary maintenance, we're still giving back $20,000 of your custodial budget, is still being applied to the operating...
Yeah, but it makes you wonder, why was, why was custodial services $42,000 high?
Well, some of it, though, is, like I said, we put a freeze on, they may do with what they could on certain things, so based on that, we had some room in the budget to pick up some of those maintenance items that we've been carrying, that whenever we have money, we're going to pick up on. So we did the three air conditioners, the timing was beautiful, and that for the kindergarten, and we picked up the wireless clock system to go in as soon as school gets out.
So let me just make two comments regarding that, Greg. Remember that last year, when we went through the FY17 budget development process, excuse me, we, we, we created the budget based on utilizing this trend budgeting process. And we acknowledged that, that during that process, the, there was, there were considerable dollars that, there were considerable dollars that came out of lying items. But we also acknowledged at the time that, because this was the first time we were going through the process, we really wouldn't know how effective that process was until we got to the end of FY17. And so my comment is that, as we get to the final, once the final closeout is done, and we have the final numbers, I think it's important to understand what the impact of trend budgeting was, so that when the district goes through the process of building the FY19 budget, there may be an opportunity to fine-tune that. And so that lying item that you mentioned may be exactly one of those lying items that you take a closer look at in terms of the trend budgeting.
Sure, well, I don't have a problem, and I've always advocated for having a maintenance line. There's no maintenance line in there, and we have lots of maintenance.
That's sort of what you're calling that extraordinary maintenance, which is really not named, I would rename that, so I think we're going to clean that up, and then we're going to come back in the fall.
Wasn't that where snow removal is coming out of two years ago?
Oh, I don't, no, I think that was added for purposes of your building maintenance, I just don't know why they picked that particular.
We had a lot of regular maintenance.
Right, so we carve out usually your regular maintenance and your major maintenance, which are things that, aren't your service contracts, it's the repairs, it's the special...
I got it, but it'd be nice to...
Have it broken out, exactly.
Because to see items that come, it's like, and I think, where did that come from?
Yeah.
Right.
We agree. Yeah, we agree with that. The one last comment I want to make, and it kind of is associated with the free cash comment, I wasn't being silly when I said, well, you never know, maybe there'll be more. Just recently, at the region level, the region school committee closed their books on a number of previous years of capital projects, and as a result of that, did send money, money went back to the towns of Sherburne and Dover, monies that were remaining in previous years' capital plans that were not spent. So it wasn't a whole lot of money, about...
About 40,000 split, you know, with the assessment.
Right. But, but things like that will continue to happen, so those little things hopefully, you know, add up over time.
Well, with the personnel changes, you don't have savings in your budget next year anyway, because...
Hopefully.
One of the, one of the teacher's role in office, teacher higher, is that your highest, and show history has shown that we're going to bring in someone with a little pressure to it, you'll have that as an encumbered, that'll be in the column where the 23 and 42 are, there'll be a big nugget there.
She's actually not at the very top step, top end of the salary scale, but she's, it's a, it's a high salary that we, hopefully, yes, we will realize salary savings.
And when you go back and look at some of these numbers we knew about early on, and so we have already made some adjustments for fiscal year 18, so if you go back and look, you'll see some, I think we did reduce custodial services by a little bit, we did reduce utilities by a little bit.
So we're starting out with positive variance. We're going to start out with a positive variance?
No, we've already reduced, like, we've already, we knew we were going to anticipate some of these...
And that budget was approved.
So we, right, that budget's already approved with some of these lower, we continued some of the trend budgeting, as Bill was mentioning, and maybe there's more, but we don't know at this point.
All right, did we?
Our kindergartners, thank you for the fresh air.
I have a quick question about that, just, I mean, obviously, today and yesterday were very hot, but are the kindergarten rooms particularly hot? They should be hotter than all the other classrooms?
Yeah, it's the wing where they are, and it's also, they have windows that allow for...
They're in quite a greenhouse back there, aren't they?
Yeah.
Well, I know they have those big, big windows, so, and other classrooms don't have windows that would work with window units, if we even considered that?
It's twofold. The kindergarten wing has a tin roof, so it, the air circulation's a little more oppressive, but we were, we didn't need to retrofit at an expense to install window units in those wings, so we went ahead and did that. If we were to consider air conditioning hypothetically in other parts of the building, it wouldn't be as easy as $1,400 and popping three units in, so...
Because of the way the windows open.
The way the window design is, is that we could put them right in without...
Our new windows.
Yeah. And we didn't upgrade to the highfalutin BTU, which would have been another $8,000 in electrical work. We went with standard design AC.
Any other questions on the finance report?
I don't, I don't have questions.
Okay.
I think they've all been asked.
Yes, you look like you think they've all been asked.
Yes, it's...
All right, item number eight, the family handbook.
Let me just introduce this and then ask Barbara to very quickly highlight what I think are basically two major changes. Not major changes, but just adjustments or differences. So annually, the school committee approves the handbook, you do it at this time of year, you have the proposed handbook for next year, you see some red in there, and you see some yellow, the yellow highlight is simply information that's in there, but just gets updated on an annual basis, it's people's names, et cetera, the staff roster. In red, there's a whole lot of red around the anti-discrimination language and policy. All of our other handbooks have that, it was just missing in this one, so we're adding it.
It was updated as a result of the CPR.
Right. So that's very straightforward. I would call your attention to, in particular, to page, page 24, and that's the homework time allotment guidelines, which, Barbara, if you can just introduce them to that, and then after that, I think is, just go to page 30, and there's some information there about report cards, which I think, just, tell me if I'm right, Barbara, kind of confirms the new process for distribution of those report cards, right?
That is correct. That is correct. And the addition in the homework section, we'll go back to our school council, which meets this coming Thursday for the final time. We've spent a lot of time and attention talking about homework in the context of challenge success... success and research, and I wanted to, we didn't change, obviously, homework policy is policy in our practices around homework, but I wanted to lift sort of a statement of purpose, if you will, around the context of a lot of, a lot of the discussion we've had at school council, and it ties in with our launch in the school improvement plan, next agenda item, where we, we really want to recognize the, our important next step of calibrating within and across grade levels, the quantity and quality of homework. But our school council pulled together hours and hours and hours of discussion into, I think, two mere paragraphs, but I think we'll fine-tune that a bit. It, it's not the intent that it reads like a white paper, and I think it kind of does, it's just, just the loft of research and discourse we've had around homework and parent survey feedback. So that's the context for that addition.
Okay. What was the next page, Bill, 30?
Yes.
30 just merely updates the fact that report cards are now distributed through the parent portal in Aspen, as opposed to the good old fashioned backpack dissemination. And then the yellow are really clerical updates around names, calendars, faculty, and new school committee members.
Any other points you want to highlight? Bill? Does anybody have any questions? Comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2017, 2018...
Can I interject for a minute? I don't know where I'm supposed to do this.
Questions?
I would like, I've been on the school council for three years, and I would like further discussion with the school council before the homework section is approved as written. So I don't know if we can approve it with the caveat that that will be reexamined, or how we can go about that.
Oh, I think that if we all agree to approve it, then we, or if the majority approves it, then it's approved.
Well, if I, if I can, Jennifer, are you, are you talking about actually changing the policy guidelines around homework?
No, there's just, just...
Or just that statement?
Some wording in the statement, and we're meeting this Thursday, and I think some of us were not at the council meeting where this particular wording was created.
Sure.
So I don't feel comfortable approving it as is, I just wanted to let the other members of the school committee know that I had a concern around it.
Yeah, thank, no, thank you for that clarification. What I was going to suggest was that the committee vote to approve the handbook, subject to the final adjustment, as explained by Dr. Brown, to that, that statement of purpose regarding homework, and that the principal will then, once the school council has had the opportunity to review that and fine-tune it, will just, will just send that, that new language on to the school committee for your information. I think that's the best way to go, because you do want to, you want to approve the handbook prior to the start of the school year.
Yeah, but it's nice to know what you're approving now, too, so...
So what you're approving, you, the only thing...
The language is going to change.
Yes, but it, but it's not a policy, it's not policy language, it's not procedure or protocol language. As I understand it, it's, it's a philosophical statement about homework, which I feel frankly doesn't necessarily even need to be in a handbook, but the school council would like it to be there so parents can read it.
Okay, so looking to entertain a motion to approve the 2017, 2018 family handbook, subject to change, subject to a language change in the school council statement of purpose regarding homework.
Sounds good.
Yeah, perfect.
Second? Or so moved?
There you go.
Yeah.
And a second?
Second.
And a second? Okay, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Disposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. So the school improvement plan, if it, I don't want to diminish the, the work that's gone into it, but I, I hate to vote on something that we haven't really had a chance to read, unless there's a legal reason to approve this tonight, I'd rather wait.
No, I, so I agree with you, given that you're just seeing this at the table for the first time, there's no legal requirement that you vote to approve the school improvement plan, and frankly, as a matter of logistics, you're aware that at the joint committee, Dr. Keo will be making a presentation...
Right.
...next Monday on his entry plan, and I think it makes sense, frankly, for the committee to wait until after that presentation. The administration may want to make some adjustments, and you can clearly wait till September for this to come back to you for your review and approval.
So, so the intent was to make this more narrow, to allow for Dr. Keo's additions and changes, so that this doesn't dictate the, the entire next year, right? So...
That's right, and, and when you get a chance to review this, you'll see that one of the, you know, one of the, the goals are similar to all of the other schools' improvement plans, we're focusing at the individual school level and district-wide wellness, focusing on, on the curriculum review cycle, and then lastly, to focus on and support the new superintendent's entry and strategic planning process.
Great, all right.
And, and if I may, last week, we were in receipt of two DSCF grants, which will specifically foster growth in a couple of our goal areas. So I haven't even had a chance to loop back with my other administrative colleagues, for example, cultivating conversations that raise awareness and culturally responsive behaviors. There are some really big hopes and dreams that we just need time to carve out logical action steps.
Okay.
Another, another DSCF grant will help us foster our school council desire, and lots of work that Jack has been doing with faculty around bringing mindfulness and opportunities for broader recess activities. So I look forward to being able to pump up some of our action steps based on that funding.
I look forward, look forward to that.
So Greg, if I can, thanks Barbara for mentioning the DSCF grants, the list of grants, they've, the foundation has approved grants, they've notified all the grant recipients, a list, we've received the list. We should have put that list for your approval on the consent agenda, so that you also receive the list, so I apologize for that. We can do that at the joint meeting.
Okay.
But tomorrow, we'll send that list out to you, so you're aware of, of the grant recipients and those grants.
Is everybody going to be, who's not going to be at the joint meeting, which is next Monday, right?
Next Monday.
Is anybody not going to be there?
The one where we got it just after...
Right, just after the Chicory meeting.
At 6:45 at Chicory School Library, yes.
Is anybody not going to be there?
I think I'm there.
All right.
But we'll send that out to you right away, sorry about that, my apologies.
Okay, so we're tabling the school improvement plan. The consent agenda, which is just the minutes, a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Disposed? No? All right, and then communications, just for everybody's reading pleasure. And Bill, this is your last meeting with, in this...
It is.
In Andrew's former second grade classroom, right? Is that right?
That's, that's correct.
So I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you, although I'll be seeing you a little bit more. It's been great to have somebody of your experience, I've enjoyed our conversations and our, our butting heads a little bit, it's just been a real pleasure, so thank you for your time. Appreciate you sticking around for another year.
No, thank you, it's, it's, it's been an extraordinary opportunity for me, in the most positive of ways, and I feel very fortunate to have had the opportunity to, to work at DS and with all of you for two years. It's, it's been tremendous, so thank you.
And thank you for taking time to work with Andrew as well. I think the transition, Andrew, it just seems like it's, it's, it's been great, at least from my perspective.
That's the great fact. I was just going to chime in if I could, I don't have a microphone, so I'll speak loudly, but I really, really do appreciate all of this time and support in this transition. It's pretty hard to be closing out one district and moving into another one with really three systems under one roof. It's a challenge. So Bill was able to really bring me up to speed on all the challenges and good work that people have been doing here, and I feel well prepared, so I very much appreciate it, Bill, I really do, I wish you very best, probably cooking up banging golf balls. You helped us out here in town, sharpening the billboards and that.
Thank you, Andrew, I appreciate that, and I think that three districts are going to be in great hands, so, that's terrific, congrats.
All right. Thank you all for your time. Move to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Everybody's in favor? Another discussion?
Getting better this game.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold it.